As the Mayor of the Town of Clayton, I'd like to call this Clayton Town Council meeting to order, ask you to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Most gracious and heavenly Father, we pause to give you thanks for the many blessings of this day, and we ask, Lord, now that you proceed, that you be with us as we proceed for the business of the Town of Clayton, for it's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Do we have any adjustments to the agenda?
There are none.
Being none, we'll move straight to the consent agenda.
Motion approved.
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Up next is the presentation of Community Planning Month proclamation. I'm going to take this off. I'm going to read. Proclamation. Community Planning Month. Whereas change is constant and affects all cities, towns, suburbs, counties, townships, rural areas, and other places, and whereas community planning and plans can man, can help manage this change in a way that provides better choices for how people work and live, and whereas community planning provides an opportunity for all residents to be meaningfully involved in making choices that determine the future of their community, and whereas the full benefits of planning require public officials and citizens who understand, support, and demand excellence in planning and plan implementation, and whereas this month of October is designated as National Community Planning Month throughout the United States of America and its territories, and whereas American Planning Association endorses National Community Planning Month as an opportunity to highlight how planning is essential to recover and how planners can lead communities, and how, excuse me, and how planners can lead communities to be resilient and long-lasting recovery, and whereas the national, the creation of the National Community Planning Month gives us the opportunity to publicly recognize and participate in the dedication of members of the Planning Board and the Board of Adjustment who have contributed their time and expertise to the improvement of the Town of Clayton, and where it is, as it is also an opportunity to recognize the many valuable contributions made by professional community and regional planners for the Town of Clayton, and extend our heartfelt thanks for the continued commitment and support of service to these professionals. Now therefore be it resolved that this month of October 2021 is hereby designated as Community Planning Month in the Town of Clayton in conjunction with the celebration of National Community Planning Month duly adopted this 18th day of October 2021 while in regular session, Mayor Jody MacLeod, and I would like to extend a hearty appreciation and thank you to all of our Planning Board members, our Board of Adjustment members, our planning staff here at the Town of Clayton for the amazing job that everyone does in helping Clayton to grow and become all that she can become, and I would like to present this to Ben. You want to make me down for us? I'm liking the winner is. All right, Ben Howell.
Good morning. Good morning. Good afternoon. Good evening.
Me too.
Patrick Pierce, Economic Development Director, wanted to introduce Lydia Davis, who's our new Economic Development Specialist. She came from UNC Chapel Hill in 2018. She's been working at The Chamber as their Director of Marketing and Communications, managing all of their channels of content creation and helping to work with investors towards their mission and to promote the overall community, which is fantastic, is a great fit. Huge thank you to Dana and all of her team over there at The Chamber for letting, letting us steal Lydia and bring her to be part of our team, but I really couldn't imagine someone better to do that. Already has great relationships in the business community and knows this community well and really has hit the ground running. She's on day six, and she's just already a great part of the team. She got to experience her first movie night, and we're just so happy that she's here, and I'm very, very thankful for her being a part of our team. So, wanted to introduce her, and if she has anything, any short words she can say.
As Patrick mentioned, my name's Lydia, coming from The Chamber, so I'm very familiar with this business community and continue, I'm excited to get to continue to work with that business community and each of y'all in this new role, so thank you.
Awesome. Welcome. We're so glad you're here.
excuse me, deputy, town managers, Ms. Gill and Mr. Barbie. My name is Sean Mazel. I'm the procurement and contracts manager, and I'm excited to be here tonight because to introduce the second member of our procurement team. His name is Dariel Anderson. He's going to be our warehouse supervisor. He comes to us from our sister municipality, the City of Raleigh, and he comes with us with four years of public utilities warehouse experience from the city. He was in the, he was a warehouse inventory supervisor. He purchased and managed inventory for water, sewer, and meters department over there at the City of Raleigh. Dariel is also bringing us 12 years plus of inventory management, customer service, and shipping and receiving experience to us here at the Town of Clayton. He's already, he's been here a week, and he's already given us so many new ideas and ways to help us with our operations at the warehouse. I'm just very excited to have him, and so I'm going to welcome Dariel to the stand.
Thank you, everybody. Nice to meet you. I'm just as excited as he is to have me to start working with the Town of Clayton. I could tell already the town is growing, there's big things happening, and I'm glad that I could be a part of it. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. Welcome. All right, now we'll move into our public hearings. The first public hearing this evening is 2020-103 PDD Lumen rezoning.
This public hearing tonight is for the rezoning of, for the Lumen property. The request is to rezone from residential estate to planned development mixed use. The property size is approximately 69.07 acres. Existing on the property, it's vacant land with a single-family residence, and it's located off of NC 42 adjacent to the 70 bypass and across from Spring Branch Medical Park. As you'll see here, the current zoning is RE, and they're proposed to take it to planned development mixed use. Just a quick picture of the property. For consisting compatibility, it, the proposed rezoning is consistent with future land use plan map and the comp plan in 2040. It's consistent with goal LU1 and objective LU 1.3, as well as goal LU3 and objective LU 3.1, which are relating to managing growth and encouraging mixed use in neighborhood and community centers, as well as identifying developing gateways into Clayton. And this is also consistent with the current draft of the 2045 Land Use Plan. Staff recommends approval of the rezoning request, and Planning Board also recommended approval of the rezoning request when they heard this. With that, I'll turn it over to the applicant or the public.
Thank you, Director Howell. Appreciate that. I'm Richard Brown with Kimley Horn, 421 Fayetteville Street in Raleigh. Happy to finally get our project to this council. It's been quite some time. We submitted, started this process back in August before, but formal submittal of August of last year, and had gone through a series of working with staff and also engaging with the neighbors throughout the process a couple of different times on our way to Planning Board, and as Mr. Howell said, got unanimous recommendation for approval of the mixed use development plan. Here with me tonight is Craig Davis with Craig Davis or Davis Park Leasing. I'll have him say a word in just a moment. In addition to Craig, also Travis Fluids, traffic engineer with our firm, Kimley Horn, as well as Molly Stewart with Morningstar, and our team again is just happy to be able to bring this exciting project before council, and I don't want to really belabor the presentation side of things, so I won't open up a set of slides that I had except to just underscore a couple of things from Directors Howell report. We agree with staff's assessment of our policy compliance with the town's policy documents. We believe that this development of its, its mix of uses and high-quality plan that we bring forward with the master plan that's in conjunction with the zoning is very much in line with the town's plans, very much in line with the small area plan that is, that defines this, this important gateway district of the town. There's a lot of investment that comes along with this development in town, in this end of town that is listed in your packet, and we're, again, appreciate working through a lot of that, a lot of the agreement side of that that's come since the end of, the end of the year when we got through the technical review committee side of this project, and since then have been working through some of these agreements that would get us to this night and get us to hopefully your support in this application. And I'll ask Craig to come say a word or two real quick, and then we're, of course, available for any questions that the council may have.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for having us here. As, as Richard has said, very excited about this project. 67 acres is going to bring a new quadrant to, and a new, new type of development, convenient development, to this 42 and 70 bypass intersection. Many items associated with rural health care, transportation, residential, retail, affordable housing in various different ways, housing in general, multifamily, and so on. We've been working with the stakeholders in and around it, and they're excited about participating in it from, from their standpoint. We've been involved with a lot of the medical facilities, people, and so on. So, we hope that everything works out. I know the, the legal teams and the engineering teams have done a very good job of identifying all of the issues associated with bringing utilities to this quadrant as well, and we're very much looking forward to the investment in both parties. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. This has been noted as a public hearing. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on this rezoning matter? Being none, I'll close the public hearing and turn it over to the council for their discussion. Mr. Grantis.
I have just a couple of questions of staff, and then one or two of the applicant. Start with staff, if I may. First question would be, this is based on the consistency with town planning land use plan rezoning approval criteria that's in our agenda packet. The question is, the capacity of adequate public facilities and services, including schools, roads, recreation facilities, wastewater treatment, potable water supply, and stormwater drainage facilities is available for the proposed use? And my question to you is, are you and staff satisfied that this is the case, and if so, why?
As far as the rezoning goes, we do feel that it is the case with the master, with the companion master plan that they have submitted that we'll be reviewing next and with the proposed conditions. However, you know, we cannot, I cannot speak to schools, but I do feel with, with everything else that the public facilities are adequate, and so, yeah, it's, and it meets the, it does, it does match up with the recommendations in our future land use plan.
And could you expand a little bit as to why you can't speak to schools?
That's frankly because I'm not, I'm not familiar enough with the Johnston County schools at this point in my employment here, and in, you know, with the way North Carolina state law is, we are, it is difficult to address schools on a municipal level with them generally being animals of the county.
So, would it be fair to say, though, that we have notified a representative of the, of the school system, making them aware that this possible development may be coming forward?
I believe they are notified as part of our process.
Okay. Next question is, it has been determined that there will be no adverse effect upon adjoining property owners unless such effect can be justified by the overwhelming public good or welfare. So, the question is, could you explain to me, or convince me that this project will not adversely, adversely affect the surrounding property owners?
Again, the rezoning itself, the rezoning will not adversely affect the surrounding property owners. The companion development that will be coming for you on the next item with the master plan has associated recommended conditions with it that will help to mitigate any impact of, for the adverse, for the, any potential adverse impacts the adjacent property owners may experience.
There is a comment in our, in our agenda that states rezoning is not entirely consistent with the southernmost portion of the primary tract, though, as that portion is currently designated as medium density residential or rural residential. So, could you explain to me the justification for supporting the rezoning of that particular segment?
It, it really relates back to the, the entire rezoning for, because it was tied in with the entire request. Staff did not feel it was appropriate to, to recommend denial of, of a part of the request and approval of the remainder, and so we did treat it as one, and because the majority of the property does, and the majority of the request does comply with our future land use plan, that's why staff and the Planning Board recommended approval.
Okay. Now I have two of the applicant, if I may. I ask this question of our staff, and would like to ask it of you as well. It's been determined that there will be no adverse effect upon adjoining property owners unless such effect can be justified by the overwhelming public good or welfare. Could you as well explain to me how this project will not adversely affect adjoining properties?
Yes. Our team feels like we've done a very sensitive job of both with the master plan setting some parameters in place that would protect against that, and go as far as to protect specific property owners against adjoining land uses that may be, you know, depending on where their density ends up, could, could have perceived impacts on those properties. So, where we've, where we've been sensitive to that in particular are providing access to our public streets that are being proposed by the master plan to the adjoining properties to the east, north, and the south, and as well as providing a wider land use buffer on the adjoining, on the east side and the north side in particular, with a higher performance buffer standard along those edges. In addition to that, we've also established a height limitation with a neighborhood transition zone on the northeast property fringe, and that's, some of, some of these things have been a response to our dialogue with the neighbors on two separate occasions where we've met with them back last fall, and then again towards the end of the year voluntarily with some changes to our master plan, came back to the neighbors and responded to some of the questions and concerns that they had raised at, at our meeting. We feel like those things have adequately and gone a long way into mitigating any potential adverse impacts to those properties.
Thank you. And I would assume that those are some of the parameters which you referred to when you said various parameters.
Yes, and in fact, there, we, we agreed to sign off on those as conditions to this rezoning application. Those should be in your packet, and any specific details we can go into in that regard, we'll be happy to, but those are, those few are spelled out. The, the street connectivity is more of a function of providing those stubs to the adjoining property boundaries.
Okay. The last question is, as I noticed in the neighborhood meeting, there were, let's see, many attendees were interested in the provisions of the parameter landscape buffers ensuring the proposed site development would not negatively impact their properties, but I didn't really see in my packet an answer to that concern.
And I'm not, I'm not sure that we've, how we documented the response to those. We had taken notes. We had taken notes of those comments, and I think as we proceeded through the TRC process, those requests and concerns were addressed on our master plan document, which Ben can correct me, is obviously the companion of this rezoning request, and I think we'll get into that next, but the packet that will, will document those changes are here on MP2 primarily, is where we've addressed a wider buffer and then put a forty-five-foot height limit within seventy-five feet of that property boundary.
And could you speak to the width of the buffer that you're referring to?
Yes, the thirty-foot buffer that is spelled out in our master plan. Let me speak accurately to that. It's, is on that north side, I apologize, a twenty-foot, twenty-foot Class C buffer. So we went, our response was a twenty-foot buffer that was a Class C, which is a higher performance standard than what would be required just by, by code, by default. And that combined with the height restriction and the separation is, is our response to the neighbors. And we, by all accounts, at least in, in the, in the dialogue that we've had with the neighbors, there was no adverse reaction to that, to that response. It seemed adequate to, to the neighbors that we were, that had shown up at the public or at the neighborhood meetings.
All right. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Anyone else? Questions or comments?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Being no further questions or comments, I'll entertain a motion. Mr. Thompson.
Mr. Mayor, after considering the recommendations of the planning board and planning director, I move to approve 2020-103-PDD and to approve the statement of consistency and reasonableness included in the agenda packet.
Second. We have a motion and a second for approval of the rezoning. Is there further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. All right. Up next is the 2020-104 SD Lumen subdivision. This is a quasi judicial process. Now I'm calling the attorney to state the, for the record, what the quasi judicial process is all about.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Quasi judicial process is a process where you all get to put on your judicial robes and sit as finders of fact. Witnesses are sworn. There are opportunities for cross-examination if that's appropriate or desired. Ex parte contacts are, are disallowed. Conflict should be noted for the record. It's much like a court proceeding in that you, not, in the typical rezoning, you're acting in a legislative capacity in a quasi judicial case, you're acting in, in a judicial capacity, and you make your decision based on the evidence presented at the hearing.
Thanks, sir.
Any questions? I'll be glad to expand.
Anybody that wishes to offer testimony, if you could please stand and raise your right hand. Salam will confirm the testimony you are about to give is true to the best of your knowledge and belief. Thank you. When you come up to offer your testimony, if you could please sign the oath sheet. Thank you.
Good evening again, Council. This brief presentation for the master plan, again, this is a request for master plan approval for a mixed use development, including up to eight hundred thousand square feet of non-residential uses, up to a hundred and twenty rooms of hospitality use, and up to six hundred twenty dwelling units on sixty-nine point oh seven acres located on NC forty-two adjacent to the seventy bypass and across from Spring Branch Medical Park. On your screen here is the proposed overall site plan showing the proposed road network and the different, what they're calling pods of development. The permitted uses that they're proposing for, under the residential and accessory use category includes, as you can see, apartments, condominiums, duplexes, single-family homes, townhomes, triplexes, quadplexes, upper story residents, among some others, congregate living facility, assisted living, nursing or convalescent facilities, apartments, and for accessory uses, farmer's market, food trucks, and parking decks. For non-residential uses, they're proposing a number of public civic uses that you'll see there, including ambulatory healthcare facility, place of assembly, places of worship, college/university, daycare facilities, hospital/medical center, schools, veterinary clinic, also recreational facilities, including indoor and outdoor entertainment, park, fitness recreational facility, industrial uses including laboratory research, manufacturing, light or research and development, as well as utility uses including communication towers, both commercial and constructed stealth. Their commercial retail uses they're proposing includes restaurant uses, microbrewery, bed and breakfast, parking garage, hotel motel, offices, retail sales, convenience store, financial institution, and also general or medical office. And then their list of non-permitted uses, which is, again, on the screen in front of you, just to mention a few, includes tattoo parlor, pawn shop, adult oriented business, storage, junkyard, warehouse, open dump, outdoor gun range, vehicle repair and service. They've provided a phasing plan, which I've provided here. The, again, the phases do not necessarily represent the sequence of development, but each phase will be self-sufficient standalone as it relates to UDC requirements. The estimated build-out in their transportation impact analysis was 2027 with approximately thirty-two thousand, almost thirty-two thousand six hundred daily trips, a little over seventeen hundred trips in the AM peak and a little over eighteen hundred trips in the PM peak. They have proposed, with NCDOT's acknowledgement, improvements on forty-two to coordinate with the widening of forty-two, including turn lanes at their east driveway modify, as well as modifying the signal at their eastern driveway, which will be across from Springbrook Drive, and constructing an eastbound right turn lane at Johnson Estate Road, which is their west driveway. They're also proposing greenway on NC forty-two, sidewalks along all internal public streets and bike lanes on their internal avenue and collector roadways. And shown here are three of their proposed cross-sections, their main street, their avenue, and their collector. Going a little bit more in depth here on phase one, on their phased improvements. Phase one improvements include most of the forty-two improvements, as well as layout of some of their internal streets. Phase two includes most, includes work primarily on their internal site, again, working on their internal streets and connections between the different pods. Phases three A and three B, again, are primarily internal working on their internal streets and connections to the pods, as well as getting the streets out, getting some of their internal road connections out to their property lines. And then phases four and five include completing the, the main site infrastructure, as well as working on pod six, which is on the other side of US seventy. Shown here is their sewer wastewater utilities plan. Again, they will be a town customer, they include, and the project includes construction of an elevated water storage tank and a new sewer pump station. And this information is from our town engineer, given some information on wastewater capacity, and I'll let Josh speak to that here.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. A few weeks ago, we were discussing another approval of wastewater. We discussed that we're getting into a phased approach as we're nearing completion of a new plant and really looking at the next few years and how do we allocate wastewater, understanding that a lot of the projects that we're seeing now and ones such as this is that the timelines for build-out are over several years, and does it make sense for all of that wastewater to hit our books upfront and tie up capacity when some of this we know will be several years out later, once our plan is either online or nearing completion? And so we begin to get into more of a phased approach. We're really looking at, and we're requesting applicants that are seeking wastewater to provide a wastewater schedule, so a schedule of when that wastewater will be needed, how quickly the projects will be building out, and so that allows us to really just kind of put together a forecasting model and try to understand what that does to our current capacity and how we look at that. So critical as, as we're looking into this and part of the staff report to, report to you, Council, where we're currently at, and also then provide some information as to how this project impacts our current wastewater standing. So before you is a timeline of graphs in terms of over the next several years. You can see the time series across the bottom. The blue bar is our existing flows, so you can see that we're just over three million gallons per day between the different treatment options in terms of what we are flowing today. The, the purple is some of the anticipated pharmaceutical industrial growth that we expect, and then the, I guess that's a red or orange color there is based on existing projects that we've already allocated to date. Again, several of those have been large chunks and we've asked for phasing, so we understand some of the previous projects, what those phased approaches look like, and you can see that they, they build out over time and how that goes in over time. The, there's a little bit of yellow that comes in there. Most of the next few years' growth and as we're forecasting is really driven by what we know is on the books now. However, as we start to get out in several years, we really don't know what's coming, and so we're pulling in some information from Campo. There's a model that they use called Community Vis, and that allows us to project some of that growth beyond what we know is coming. So a lot of near term, next few years, we've got some idea of what's coming. Obviously, there's still some more, and so there are some percentage and growth rates built into this. Above that, you do see a, a blue line that shows our current capacity. That's at the four point nine between our three different treatment options we have between the City of Raleigh, Johnston County, and our own Little Creek plant. You do see a jump up in 2022. We are working through an agreement with City of Raleigh to work through additional capacity and anticipate bringing that to you later this year and to see that through in execution. And then you do see the jump in twenty, by 2025 there when we anticipate, anticipate our plant being online. One other thing to note, too, just keep in mind that 2027 is not shown here, but it does not stay up above nine through 2027. We do have agreements that are sunsetting, so that is going to come back down. Just keep in mind that it's not quite shown in this chart, but I don't want to make it look that for years we're good past 2027 as that does come down because we have some sunsetting agreements with others in place. So hopefully this kind of gives an overview of where we are currently at in terms of our existing flows, that new term development that we anticipate having. The near term, active and near term development is shown at what is anticipated based on two T rules. So that is the full amount. Now, a lot of times when these projects do come online, they do not flow as much as we project, but we have to plan and we have to project for the most conservative worst-case scenario. So it is likely that as that red transitions from what is the projected based on paper flows to tributary flows, it may be less. A lot of cases, we do see that, but obviously we can't plan for that, but do want to make you mindful that sometimes that may be a given as it may, it may decrease a little bit once the projects actually come on and they're not flowing, but these are what we project and we have to plan for conservative approach in terms of our wastewater. One other thing to note here, there are several assumptions that I need to make you aware of in this. One is, again, that first, that there, we would be able to officially execute agreement with City of Raleigh to bump it up to twenty in 2022 to additional wastewater. That is one assumption, as well as, there are some projects that as we move forward, this is looking at our system as a whole, that we would probably need to do on the smaller project level in terms of just being able to move flow around town between our different treatment methods. So just keep that in mind, that this is just looking at the overall system, but as we move forward, we may get into a need of some budget as, to be able to just move flows in certain directions around town as we manage the flows out towards, when our new plant comes online. So with that, I'm going to get into the request tonight from, from the Lumen project. Again, that may be kind of small there, but as, as alluded to, we request the projects to provide a phasing. This is the phasing to the left. You see the description, the type of product, the quarter to which the applicant anticipates submitting sewer permits for, and then now that's broken out over the years, build-out in towards second quarter 2025, when they would be requesting the final sewer allocation in terms of what will get submitted to the state. So that's not complete build-out, that's just when they would anticipate needing to put it on our books in terms of paper. So I've got a graph that now shows with this included as well. This does include another project that we'll be discussing later tonight in terms of allocation. It is for fifty thousand. This year total for just around four hundred and ten thousand, in addition to the, the fifty thousand, it's just about a tenth of it. You can see the increase, you can see what that does to our overall capacity. A couple of things to note here, too, again, just keeping in mind that as the, the red does indicate what we're planning for, in, in theory, some of that may come down, not given. Other things to keep in mind, too, is this is just a total system flows. We are able to start projecting and we can book, to book flows when we know our plan's coming online, we will actually be able to take advantage of that before it's actually commissioned. There's a process we have to go through, we have to justify why we are going to be able to do this in terms of we are going to approve this project or not, but you can see that it does, getting towards when we anticipate our plan being online, it is getting close to where our capacity is at. And again, several of those assumptions is that these agreements go through, we do have the ability and we get projects done that we're able to move things around and our project stays on schedule as anticipated. Upon, when we get to the action item, obviously it would be the council's decision. This project is over ten thousand. It has been scored by the existing wastewater allocation policy. The total score for this project is, was at a ninety-five, so it does meet the minimum fifty points. That is including the deduction for a pump station, and the project with the mixed use and everything else that it entails does get the minimum fifty points for scoring based on the policy the council has adopted. When we get to the action item, obviously approval would be up to the town council, or if there's any modifications in terms of the scheduling, that would be up to the council. So with that, I'm happy to turn it back over to Ben and then maybe just take overall questions, or I'll let Ben take care of it.
Finishing up my staff report, again, the, the request has been determined to be consistent, compatible with the 2040 growth plan with goals LEU one and LEU three, and the applicant has addressed specific findings of fact as outlined in the staff report. Considerations for the council, or considerations regarding this master plan, each phase of the development will be reviewed as a separate minor site plan or subdivision plan prior to plat, recordation, or building permit issuance. Approved, this master plan will be recorded with Johnston County and shall guide future development for this land. Approval of this master plan is contingent upon approval associated with, with the associated rezoning, which has already been approved, and if approved, staff recommends conditions of approval be placed upon the preliminary plat 2020-104-SD. Those conditions include those that are on your screen and in your, at your, in your packet. The first several are just ensuring that the development is, that the project is developed according to town requirements and ordinances, also requiring the development to obtain all local, state, and federal permits as, and environmental permits, and that it be developed in substantial conformance with the master plan as presented. And then a few other conditions include that all parcels subject to the rezoning master plan shall be annexed in town prior to any additional development approvals, as well as the parcel designated for the water tank and pump station shall be annexed prior to approval construction. approval construction drawings for those, for the infrastructure. We did place, we are recommending condition, limiting the intensity per the master plan to 800,000 square feet of non-residential use, not including square footage dedicated hospitality use, limiting the hospitality use to 120 rooms, and limiting the residential use to 620 dwelling units. With an allowance of the planning director can administratively approve an increase in the non-residential square footage by up to 10% as long as it does not exceed the trip budget as allocated in the TIA. There's also a requirement that the developer, that the development will provide a 20-foot yard, 20-foot street yard buffer along 42 frontage, including an opaque screening at a height of six feet at installation. A requirement for POD 4 to have a maximum structure height of 145 feet with the exception of neighborhood transition zone, which shall have a maximum structure height of 45 feet. A requirement for non-residential and residential structures in the development to conform to the architectural standards in Section 9 of the master plan. The requirement of the Town of Clayton shall approve the final size and location of the public facilities, including the pump station and water tower, and that phasing of off-site transportation improvements shall be approved by North Carolina Department of Transportation, and that construction of the off-site transportation improvement shall be in conformance with standards and requirements of NC DOT. And with that, that concludes the staff report. And at this time, I will turn it over to the applicant to make a presentation as well.
Ben, Mayor, Mayor, could I ask about the additional condition? Did you go over the additional condition for the water storage?
I'll jump in here. One of the items that you have for consideration that's noted on the agenda was the approval of a potential purchase option for a water tank. The town has been working with the applicant. They have an, they have a certain amount of elevated storage that's associated with their project. However, the town has identified additional needs in that general area that we would look to partner with them to build a larger tank. Unfortunately, we were not able to get the final terms of that agreement prepared for you for this evening. So the attorney, as working with staff, has drafted some additional language for a condition that effectively would allow for moving forward this evening. That language is in front of you here at the table. Effectively, the language is that an agreement between the town and developer for the additional water storage within the project boundary should be executed prior to conditional construction drawing approval and submission of any water permits for Phase 1 infrastructure construction drawings. Alternatively, the developer may design, construct, and dedicate a minimum 300,000-gallon elevated water storage tank to town standards and specification. Absent of an executed agreement, the tank shall be permitted by NC DEQ prior to town acceptance of Phase 1 utilities and constructed prior to submitting water permits for cumulative total of 275,000 gallons of water. Staff intends to continue having discussions with the developer. Hopefully, we can bring something back to you in November for consideration, but the language as drafted would allow for an action this evening, so if it was the council's, well.
Okay, good.
All right. Richard Brown again with Kimley Horn representing the applicant. We don't have any additional prepared statements or presentation for the master plan, very similar to the, to the earlier part of the rezoning petition, but do agree with staff in that the findings of fact for this subdivision and master plan have been met. We have been working through and agreed to all the conditions as they've been listed to the council this evening. As Rich said, we've been working through some final details of this agreement with the elevated storage tank for the, the capacity that's beyond our development, but we feel like, you know, as far as the majority of that issue is addressed in Condition 14 where the town, you know, of Clayton will approve the final size and location of that, of that storage tank. And we're prepared to continue those discussions, not in a position to entertain the alternate condition tonight at the table, but certainly willing to continue that discussion and find a middle ground there that works for everyone. And our, again, I'm here and our traffic engineer Travis Fluid here to speak on behalf of any of the technical contents of the application. Thank you.
So it's very customary here that the applicant would address at this time the
And it'll take my glasses for this one, sorry. Just a second. As to finding a fact, number one, that the subdivision is consistent with the adopted plans and policies of the town. As we've listed here, the master plan proposal is consistent with those adopted policies. The assemblage is a part of the Johnson Health Memorial Hospital NC 42 area plan that was adopted in 2007. As a part of the plan, the parcel is designated as mixed use and intended to have a high quality of land uses and mix of those land uses in a wide variety of both residential and non-residential uses to meet the demands of the surrounding area. In response, finding of fact, number two, the subdivision, which is the subdivision meets all the required specifications of the UDO, except where the master plan modifies those conditions that have been worked through with staff and agreed to be reasonable alternatives. The plan proposed is consistent with the, these, the adopted UDO. The applicant will ensure that the master plan will continue to meet the required specifications of the town's UDO, except where, again, they were otherwise addressed and modified with alternative design standards as a part of the master plan. As to finding a fact, number three, which is that the subdivision will not be detrimental to the use or orderly development of other properties in the surrounding area and will not violate the character of the existing standards for the development of properties in the surrounding areas. The proposed plan does not adversely affect the adjoining properties and the property, this subject property is uniquely situated at a major gateway intersection with, with two of the town's major transportation corridors. Land uses are conducive to the location and supported by traffic and compatible with the local development patterns in the immediate vicinity. The size and assemblage of the proposed infrastructure and the proposed infrastructure will also support the, the mix of uses with retail, office, and institutional, public, civic, townhomes, and even congregant care uses that are proposed as uses, allowable uses within the, the development plan. As noted earlier, appropriate buffers have also been proposed along NC 42 and along the, the adjoining residential properties to the, particularly to the east and to the north of our site. And we meet the finding of fact in our, in our opinion with those provisions. Finding of fact, number four, that the subdivision design will provide for the distribution of traffic in a manner that will avoid and mitigate congestion within the immediate area, will provide for the unified and orderly use of the extension of public infrastructure and will not materially endanger the environment, public health, safety, and the general welfare. A few things there, a few ways that we feel like we're meeting that, that finding of fact is we're providing adequate public facilities via the street intersections that come off of NC 42 in accordance with the R 3410 widening plan by NC DOT. We're providing public streets, as Ben had presented throughout the development, to maximize connectivity. All those will be public streets built to public street standards and within the specification of the cross-sections that we've provided as an alternative within the master plan. And that provides connectivity to all adjoining property owners and that we believe greatly improves the connectivity that doesn't exist today to NC 42 via public streets. We also meet the demands to the maximum extent practical through those facilities. And then the approval of the master plan and rezoning would be contingent upon the execution of this developer agreement that's been referred to previously and that would provide adequate infrastructure efficiency in the way of water and wastewater. The development plan also provides the stub streets to the adjoining properties. And in the way that it does not, in the way that it does not adversely impact the environmental and public health and safety and general welfare is the preservation of many of the existing wetlands and jurisdictional features on the site. Over 20% of our development, if I'm not mistaken, or our land area is going to be preserved in open space and environmentally, environmental wetland and pond and buffer, jurisdictional buffer areas. In those ways, we feel like that we have met the findings of fact of this subdivision and happy to address any questions that the council may have. Thank you.
Earlier, you stated you had a traffic engineer here on your behalf. Is that true? I would like for that person to come forward, state your name, state your credentials, and verify for the record that what's been read into the record as it pertains to traffic is what you believe to be true.
Yes, sir. Travis Fluid with Kimley Horn Associates, 421 Fayetteville Street, Suite 600 Raleigh, North Carolina. I am a registered professional engineer in the state of North Carolina, performing traffic studies for 17 years, or 17 years of experience. I did prepare the traffic impact analysis for this site and the, based on the traffic impact analysis and the conditions put forward, the traffic will be accommodated by this proposed development and everything previously stated is factual to the best of my knowledge.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. We've heard from the applicant. And this is a public hearing. Anyone else wishing to speak on this topic? No one else wishing to speak? There's no need for rebuttal, and we will turn it over to council for questions and comments. Mr. Graham.
The first thing I'd like to do is just ask our town engineer to come up for a couple of points of clarification on the diagrams that he provided us.
Mr. Graham, can I get you in the microphone? Because even I'm having a little trouble hearing. The mask are a pain, but yes, thank you.
If you could, yeah, that's the one I'm interested in. If I read this correctly, it appears that in 2022, we're going to have, this is a guess based on the diagram I'm looking at, somewhere in the neighborhood of maybe 800,000 gallons of available capacity? Is that?
Just a little bit more, and I understand it can be deceptive in a way, that as we're looking at the phased approach, if you look at where we're at today and you add up all of the large projects that have come before you in the recent months or years, this is actually spaced out over time. But if you take the lump sums of really what you guys have approved of in a phased condition, but if you do that cumulative, it's probably, I think it's right, 1.9 million gallons of wastewater per day. So what you're looking at is that spaced out. So it's hard to say that there's 800,000 available because we're bringing it to you in a phased approach. But again, if you were to take those phasings and just put it all into one lump sum, if we're putting it before you or permitting it all at one time today, it's going to be a sum of that that's carried out through several years. And so I don't believe that'd be a completely accurate statement to say it's 800,000 because we are phased in, we're bringing it out. But if you look at really where we're at today and the total of allocations, we're right near the 4.9, but we are phasing that out and we're looking at it phased out, knowing that there's other agreements coming, there's other treatment capabilities coming, as well as many of these projects are going to be a lifespan of several years. Does that answer your question?
I think, I think it does. Just as a follow-up, and you correct me if I'm wrong, you're anticipating additional capacity to come in at specific periods of time, which would probably more than compensate what we have actually committed to. Is that a relatively fair statement?
I think it's a relatively fair statement, yes. We're anticipating additional agreements, additional capacities, and understanding that this stuff is going to be several years out. It's not going to all hit and become flowing one day. There's got several large projects, to name a few, Ashcroft 2.0, there's some others out there that are heavy lump sum projects, but when you look at them over time, they're spaced out, and so it's not all one, at one time, because we know the build out of some of these are over several years.
I guess the only other question then I have about that would be, you're indicating that we may have additional contracts, most notably the additional Raleigh. And then you've also mentioned a county contract in your diagram. Has any thought been given to what happens if those don't come to pass?
It certainly is something and a risk to any approval or anything to understand. The, the county contract is what we have, the existing 1.44 that we currently have with the county now. The additional is that that's noted with the City of Raleigh. So yes, there is some risk to that. If that doesn't happen, we would then be looking to what other options there would be on the table. And there is risk to that if those do not come true.
And in your experience, what would be the percentage of risk?
Percentage of risk? I mean, it's hard to put a percentage on that in terms of, you're looking in the event that does not happen, I might.
That's correct.
I mean, I think things are looking pretty good. I think we're getting closer to bringing something before you. I'll see if town manager has any additional info in terms of how close that is.
Yeah, I was going to say two things. I'll jump in here. So we have a contract that has been passed back and forth regarding additional capacity with the City of Raleigh. It anticipated that we would have that for you on the November 1st meeting, and they would take it to their council at, I can't remember what their second meeting is in November, but effectively, from a staff level, we're down to the finer points, just to make sure that we've got our i's dotted and t's crossed. Jim and his team will be given that final legal review, obviously, but the intent is to bring it forward on November 1st. That would be for an additional 750,000 gallons. Also, not represented here in the, the graph specifically, one of the things that we've baked into our design with the new pre-treat, new wastewater treatment plant and the conversion of Little Creek would be to allow for Little Creek to actually continue to function up to a certain, you know, million gallon, or 2 million gallons per day effectively, while also sending flow down to the river while that site is being finalized and/or the Raleigh agreement is being maximized. So we have some contingency plans in there that we are working on or including in our efforts moving forward. If you look at the line without the Raleigh, basically, we would be at capacity sometime in that 2024. Right now, our new plant is projected to be online in 2024. We can, you know, we'll speak in seasons sometime in the fall of 2024 is when I would anticipate as of right now with current projections. So effectively, we've got some contingency plans in there that could allow us to continue to meet the current growth projections, as Joshua stated, that have been kind of peppered through the years, over the next several years, while that new plant comes online.
So it sounds to me like Little Creek could play into this, very importantly, should some of these other two options not come through. And I'm glad you put, pointed that out because obviously, that wasn't something that I saw in the diagram. That makes me feel much better.
Understood.
That's, that's really all I had of you, Joshua. Thank you. Mr. Howell, I've got a couple of questions for you, if you don't mind.
On the findings of fact, number two, subdivision meets all required specifications of the Unified Development Code. The answer that was provided, this plan proposal is consistent with the adopted plans of the Town of Clayton. The applicant will ensure that the master plan will continue to meet all required specifications of all, of the policies and the town Unified Development Code, except where otherwise...
of the policies and the town Unified Development Code, except where otherwise addressed through alternate design standards as spelled out within the project master plan narrative. So for me, that implies that there may be changes that are coming that do not comply with the Unified Development Code. So could you help me with that?
So that statement is in there to refer to the fact that in the applicant's master plan, they have proposed some different setbacks and other dimensional requirements that differ from the requirements in our Unified Development Code. And a lot of that is primarily because this is a planned development district that it does not currently exist in our Unified Development Code. If you look in the master plan, I believe it is section seven or eight, they include their proposed dimensional requirements that differ from the Unified Development Code.
So if I understand you right, you're saying that these quote "exceptions" might be due to something that's not currently in our code as a requirement? Is that fair to say?
To some extent, yes. They're exceptions based on the request of the applicant in their master plan narrative. So they're, and it's, and a lot of that is around the fact that we do not have a mixed-use zoning district in our Unified Development Code.
This actually, this question is for both staff and applicant, and I'll start with you. The subdivision will not be detrimental to the use or orderly development of other properties in the surrounding area and will not violate the character of existing standards for development of properties in the surrounding area. The response was, the proposed project does not adversely affect the adjoining properties and property owners. The property is uniquely situated at a major gateway intersection with two of the town's major transportation corridors. Land uses, I'm sorry, land uses are conducive to the location and supported by traffic and compatible with development patterns. Here's the key. The size of the assemblage and proposed infrastructure will also support the proposed mix of uses with retail, office institution, public, civic, townhomes, and even congregate care being proposed. Appropriate buffers are also proposed to protect the adjacent land uses. My concern is that statement about infrastructure. And can you justify to me how they can make that statement when we haven't truly solidified what that infrastructure is going to be?
For that, I will actually defer to the applicant and their experts for that testimony.
Okay. And it's, if he may, the applicant may?
Yes, thank you. Good question. And we believe that, obviously, the ability to provide that infrastructure sufficiency is going to be through the developer agreements that are a part of the resolutions that have come before you. And those commitments to the elevated storage tank, the pump station, and other connections to the public system are ways that this development will independently support its demand on that system. Does that help answer the question?
It does. I think the only concern that I have is, as we all know, at this moment in time, we do not have a signed agreed-to development agreement. Would you concur with that?
That's my understanding, yes.
Mr. Mayor, that's all the questions I had with respect to quasi.
All right. Thank you, sir. Anyone else? All right. If there are no further questions for staff or for the applicant, I will turn it over to the council for deliberation and.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I apologize. I do have several questions that pertain to the traffic information analysis or impact analysis. Again, my apologies, I neglected to mention that. If I may continue.
Did timing is perfect? Yes.
Okay, I'm looking at 5.0 projected traffic volumes in your traffic impact study, which is page nine of that particular segment, I believe. Or actually, it shows page nine on the document. So I noticed that the traffic volume information that's provided here is five years or a little bit older. So my question about this is, have you added any percentage of growth to that? That's one question. If you have, I'd like to know what it would be. Or if you have further studies which discount what the dates of these were, I guess better put, do you have more, much more current information? The reason I ask that question is because this town has grown at a rate of about 5.4% per year. And based on the information that I have read, that the software is using only 3% per year. So that's almost double. And that's a very significant concern to me. So I'm looking for more current information, and if not available, I'd like to know why we're using something as old as it is.
Absolutely. So the traffic counts that were used, I think you're looking at, were from 2016. Those were only used for the existing traffic conditions. Those were grown at a rate of 3% per year, as you noted, up to the year 2020, which is when the traffic analysis was performed. We did that because we were unable to get new traffic counts due to COVID conditions. This, the TIA was performed in the summer of last year, right in the heat of COVID. Traffic conditions were not representative of normal, so we could not get new counts. So we used that older data only for the existing conditions. For the future year conditions, we actually used the traffic forecasts from the NC DOT, NC 42 widening project and interpolated those to the build-out year of 2027. And so those four projections, those forecast volumes, were used for the future year conditions. And then the majority of our traffic was just added, for the traffic for this development was just added on top of those forecasts. So I do not know what the growth rate was in the forecasts, what the effective annual growth rate was. We did not prepare the forecasts, but we did use the NC DOT forecasts for the NC 42 project. And that methodology was approved by NC DOT and the town because really, that was the best available information at the time due to the conditions we were in during COVID.
So we don't really know what percentage increase DOT used with respect to growth at this stage?
No, but I will say that I was, if you look at the existing volumes on NC 42, the existing AM and PM peak hour volumes, and those are grown from 2016 up to 2020, but from those existing 2020 volumes up to the background condition in 2027, they effectively double in each direction. So for example, at Johnson Estate Road, the, I'll just take the eastbound through volume on NC 42 in the morning goes from 789 vehicles up to 1,404. So almost doubling over a period of seven years. I don't know what that growth rate amounts to, but I think that's effectively over 10% just off the top of my head. So they do represent a significant amount of growth on 42.
And I don't disagree with that. One concern I have, though, is that in the five-year period that I previously mentioned, we were looking at almost double, yet in your seven-year, we're not looking quite at double, and we're adding two more years. So that's a bit of a concern to me. Was there any onsite research done? And if so, how long? Were there traffic counts taken? Were there actually engineers or folks who are responsible for doing surveys and studies onsite at all?
When you're referring to onsite, are you talking about onsite traffic, like existing traffic?
No, I'm talking about individuals being at those sites to either do traffic counts or maybe you had a mechanism where traffic counts were taken. Was there a live body? Was there mechanical equipment that was able to give some accountability to the numbers?
We did not perform any new traffic counts as part of this, again, because it was right in the middle of the pandemic. I can't speak to what data NC DOT used to develop their forecasts. They generally perform traffic counts. Those forecasts were performed in 2019. So I would assume that they did traffic counts as part of that, but I can't speak to that since we did not prepare them. We did perform a site visit and observed existing traffic conditions, but again, that was during COVID, so it was not really reflective of normal traffic operations at that time.
Okay, thank you. Under 4.0 site traffic distribution, I see percentages for several of the roads there. I'm curious to know how those percentages were arrived at and if these, any of these figures were used in the study to get us to where we are.
Yes, sir. Those volumes, those percentages are an estimate of where we think traffic will be coming, how traffic will come to the site, and where it will be going. Those are based on the existing land uses in the area, the existing traffic patterns from the counts, and the NC DOT forecasts. Those were reviewed in conjunction with town staff, since, you know, they are the local experts, very familiar with the area, and as well as NC DOT. The town staff and NC DOT staff thought they were both appropriate. But then we use those percentages, apply them to the trip generation estimates for the site, and that determines the peak hour new trip volumes that will be added to the network. So those definitely factor into the analysis in this report.
So again, we didn't have anybody onsite. It was all done with information that was provided by either software or some history or something that the DOT provided, software-wise.
We did have traffic counts and other studies for the existing hospital, existing medical facilities. So we looked at how people were coming in and out of those facilities to determine these estimates. But, you know, when you're projecting where people are going to go to and from in the future, there's only so much you can do with existing data. It's more about where we think people will be going and where they will be coming from. And that's why we rely on the town and DOT to review these numbers and check whether they think they concur with our estimates or not. And they did in this case.
And how many days or hours did that research go or take?
The development of these numbers specifically? Or you're talking about the traffic count?
Well, it sounds like you had someone onsite for a period of time, unless I misunderstood you.
Well, we did perform, we did perform a site visit. The site visit itself probably took a couple hours, visiting all the existing intersections. But then we used the existing count data at the, like the driveway at Springbrook, the existing facility, the driveway to the facility just to the north at Johnson Health Parkway. Looking at that data, those counts were performed probably on one day, 1 a.m. and 1 p.m. peak hour period.
Under 6.0, again, capacity analysis, the term Synchro version 10 software is mentioned. And can you explain to me, one, how old is that software? And what does that software do?
I can't speak to, I think the latest version of Synchro, Synchro 10 is the latest version.
Do you know what year it was published?
I want, I do not know off the top of my head, within the last five years, but I do not know when they upgraded from nine to 10.
And what does it do?
Synchro performs traffic capacity calculations. You put in inputs about the number of lanes on the road, the lane widths, the timings of the signals, and the traffic volumes, and it spits out a, it performs a series of calculations and gives estimates for delays per vehicle on every movement approach and for the total intersection in a roadway network. We use it because it accounts for multiple intersections in coordination. It's based on the algorithms provided in the Highway Capacity Manual, but it is a software, it's the industry standard, it's the standard here in North Carolina, it's always used by the NC DOT Department of Transportation, as well as the majority of the municipalities here in the state.
Okay. Thank you for that. On 6.1, Table 61 shows AM and PM peak hours with respect to level of services. And I noticed that we've got two locations that are, I'm sorry, one location that happens to be D, both in AM and PM, and another that has C, both AM and PM. In your professional experience, do you feel that that is sufficient? Or do you feel that is diminished and should be improved?
So the intersection is projected to operate at level service C in the background condition and operate at level service D in the build-out condition with this site. Levels of service A through D are generally considered acceptable, with levels of service E and F considered unacceptable. We did recommend some mitigation at this intersection in spite of the acceptable level service, notably additional queuing for the southbound left turn lane. And there are ongoing negotiations as to what other mitigations may be required at this intersection. I say they are ongoing because of the widening project. NC DOT is also looking at larger changes to this intersection. And so some improvements that we might recommend might be in conflict with changes they are pursuing. So those negotiations are, that's still under discussion. But in general, yes, the intersection is projected to operate at an acceptable level service at build-out with this site.
6.4, the next to last paragraph. State's analysis indicates that with recommended improvements in place, the intersection is expected to operate at LOSD in both peak and project build-out. Sim traffic simulations show potential for long queues on the minor street approaches in the peak hours. That concerns me from the standpoint of storage. And what I'm not real clear about is, is is there going to be storage requirements? And if so, what would they be? And will that help mitigate that comment?
Yes. So particularly on this site, I don't know if you saw in the exhibits, there is a roundabout proposed within the site. We are providing sufficient laneage to accommodate the queues to prevent them from spilling back into that roundabout. NC DOT in general will provide more time for the movements on 42. They will prioritize NC 42, hence the longer queues that you sometimes get on side street movements because they want to keep NC 42 moving. But we are providing adequate laneage to mitigate those. But we are providing adequate laneage to mitigate those queues and provide enough stacking so the queues don't extend, you know, back through the site, blocking other intersections and causing problems for, within the development.
The reason I raise that question is at Barber Mill Road in 42 West and to a lesser degree at Guy Road in 42 West and Amelia Church in 42 West, at peak hours, and I'm not an engineer, I'm certainly not a traffic engineer, but I have lived in this town for 20 years and I have experienced those particular intersections at peak hours, whether it be in the morning or the evening. And in some cases, I've had to wait through four lights. And that to me is what I choose to call, how would I say? It's an imposition. But in your experience, is there anything that will be done on those areas that I mentioned that can improve those wait times and quite possibly increase those storage times, or storage lengths?
I am not familiar with the first two intersections you mentioned, but at 42 and Amelia Church, NC DOT is proposing improvements there as part of their 42 widening project to help mitigate those delays. And to your question, you know, we definitely want to avoid that same situation, people having to sit through four cycles of a signal to get in or out of this development, hence the multiple lanes that we are proposing exiting the site. We were proposing dual lefts exiting the site to go west on 42, a three-lane and a right turn lane to exit the site because we completely agree, we don't want people sitting through four cycles of a signal either.
Okay. I certainly want to thank you for your time. Mr. Mayor, there are, I know, more questions that I could ask, but they pertain to the NC DOT report, which quite frankly, due to the size of the agenda and the short period of time in which we had to thoroughly review it, I was not able to get to that.
Okay. All right. Anyone else with any further questions? I'll now call the council into deliberation.
Mayor, if I could, one point of clarification. I just want to make sure we're not talking past each other on these conditions. And I was unclear on the applicant's position on this condition number 16. Was that the additional one, was that agreeable?
Yeah, the applicant's position is that, you know, we've been working with staff the last 24, 48 hours in that the condition as it's written is brand-new to us, so we're not in a position to agree to that tonight. However, I think condition number two, if you will, the fact that agreeing that the development will meet all the conditions of the agreements as stated in the developer agreement and signed by all parties is part of our willingness, again, to continue working through the language of that additional condition and seeing if we can get to an acceptable condition there.
Without agreement on that condition, it sounds to me like the matter needs to be held open and continued.
And that's understandable. I think the applicant team is willing to continue working through that, and if it's not the will of the council to act tonight without that, then we were happy to come back with work on that item and any other questions that the council may have in deliberation. All right?
So I will just ask for clarification on that. Are you suggesting it's in the town's best interest to hold from this point forward?
Yes.
Until this can get, this specific aspect can get?
Continue this hearing, yes, sir.
Okay.
That's my recommendation. I think we've got, we've got an impression in one condition that conflicts with another condition, and without agreement on all 16 conditions, I'm concerned about approval tonight.
So if I postpone this for two weeks, do you think that it's going to be adequate time for you and your client to have this worked out? Perfect. So I will entertain a motion to
Continue.
To continue this until the November 1st meeting. Hold on, please. Mr. Holder.
I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay, hold on just a minute.
May I say something or am I allowed to? Guard or no?
I would say go ahead. I say go ahead quickly.
We thought we were there tonight in this regard. In this quadrant, the utilities for growth is extremely significant. We've been working on a million-gallon water tank that would be reimbursed by the town for over six months in a location that we have proposed that we feel like works. There were studies done that that $6.5 million tank might be a little bit more costly. And so what we did with the team is say we'll cap the cost to the town at $6.5 million. Anything over that, we'll pick up. And if, in fact, we have the ability to acquire additional land, which we're seeking, that we will relook at the location of the water tank. So we walk in tonight and we get handed this condition, and we believe that it's in the best interest of the quadrant and the town to move forward rapidly with this so that we can get the things under construction. Okay? We would prefer not to defer, but if that's required and you feel like that we can get there, we would agree to that. Okay? But I think in all, with all team members' respect, the development agreement we've been working on for nine months, and we are all in agreement. We think we're in agreement. Council thinks we're in agreement. There's been numerous conversations with staff in agreement, and we're ready to go. Okay? We spent millions of dollars at this stage of the ballgame. So I would respectfully request that if you elect to defer, we're okay with that, but in two weeks, we need to, we need to make this thing happen.
So I'm personally very excited about this project, and I know it will be good for Clayton, North Carolina. I'm not in favor of deferring this, but however, it is a red flag to me when my attorney stops the process. And I will adhere, I will go with my attorneys.
And that's why?
That's why I asked for clarification on the record about if this gets postponed for two weeks, will we be able to have this cleared out so that when we get to two weeks from now, we will pick up from this point, address the clarifications, make sure everything is good, and then the council will jump right back into deliberation.
Yes, sir.
Yes, we will pick right up where we left off. Thank you. All right, Mr. Holder.
I move we continue this clause.
I second.
Until the 1st November meeting.
Okay. We have a motion and a second for defer till November 1st. Questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, lock sign. Motion carries. We will defer till November 1st. Thank you.
I have the same recommendation for item C.
I will entertain a motion for item C to defer that until the November 1st meeting as well. So a motion by Mr. Grantis and a second by Councilman Bun. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, lock sign. Motion carries. All right, I'm going to call for a ten-minute recess. All right, I'm going to call for a ten minute recess.
All right, and we call our meeting back to order, and the next item on the agenda under all business is Riverwood Ranch wastewater allocation.
Director of Engineering, before you tonight is a request for additional wastewater capacity for the project Riverwood Ranch. Project master plan was originally heard on October 6th, 2008. The initial phases of the project having completed, the commercial portion up along Pritchard's Road, the here is, I believe, the latest master plan, post some amendments. It shows some of the commercial up along Pritchard's, it's just on the north side of Pritchard's Road. The project, when it was going through the master plan hearing and approval in October 2008, the project only requested 70,000 gallons per day of wastewater. It was really to serve and to cover the first phase. My understanding is the applicant, there was only a request, they were denied, they were not denied the overall, it was just initial request for that 70,000. The applicant is ready to proceed forward with the additional phases of it, the residential phases, and has came back for the request for additional wastewater. Project site, at the end of the project. It's a total of 202 units. Let's see, density, it's like 2.08 units per acre is shown on the latest site plan that's in review right now for the town. The, the project has not been scored under the current wastewater policy because this approval and the hearing came in 2008. The project has not gone through the most current policy for wastewater and per the scoring and the minimum scoring of 50. The, we have pulled the most, or the policy that was in effect at 2008. That policy still does require council approval of anything over 10,000 gallons. So the request tonight before you is for 50,500 gallons per day, and that is to be permitted, request in early 2020. The applicant has requested all of that upfront and available January 2022. Just for the record too, any approval tonight, it was just for the overall allocation, there are some improvements that need to be taken to some of our pump stations and anti-gravity lines, so the applicant and the developer would be responsible for that, but tonight just would be for the overall capacity, and the developer would still be responsible for any improvements to convey this amount of wastewater. So with that, I'll take any questions.
Questions or comments for staff? Mr. Grantis.
Yes, Juan, those, those particular improvements that you're talking about have always been in place, is that correct? This is not anything new, or?
No, we would require of any developer, if there's non-existing capacity for the conveying system, they would be on the development to upgrade and to handle those improvements.
Okay.
All right, anyone else? All right, thanks, sir. Mr. Thompson.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the adoption of resolution 2021-50.
Very good.
We have a motion and a second for approval of the adoption of resolution 2021-50. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Up next is the fiscal year 22 road rehab program.
Once you get it figured out. Good evening, Mayor, Town Council, Blake Mills, Director of Public Works. I'm going to talk to you tonight about the fiscal year 22 road rehabilitation program. Now, in the program, we're proposing 15 streets, and the streets that we're proposing are shown on the map, and we've, we've got the Tressawood, Walnut Creek, Woodbend, Trailwood, Hollypoint Place, Westwood Place, and this is on the Walnut Creek subdivision. We're going to do some roads in Garrison, and we just did Garrison and McKenzie in the last couple of years, we did both of those streets. Now we're following up with Brandon and Sess and Gracie Drive as well. In the Pond area, we're going to do Pond Street, Damon Street, and Durham Street as shown on these plans. We're also going to put in a sidewalk on Pond Street and connect it over to the Black Oak where the development, where there's a segment of sidewalk that dead ends, and bring it all the way to John Street. And the last area that we're going to work in is the Black Forest area, just off of Glen Laurel. We're going to do Black Forest Road, Trail and Oak Trail, and Red Beef Trail. And, really, there is, how we come up with these roadways, there really is a method to the madness. We actually start with much, much more roads than these. We actually have $4.35 million worth of deficiencies on roads that we think we have to fix now, but we have to pare those down to which ones are the most important. We're really trying to meet certain criteria to give us the biggest bang for a buck. So we're looking for the highest rate of return, and how we do that is we really want to find the most optimal time in a roadway's life cycle. So you want to pick the point where it's reached the end of its useful life, and if you can get that point, then you'll prevent it from accelerating, because at that point it really deteriorates at accelerated level, and you get exponential increase in costs. So it can go, it could quadruple across if you don't get to it soon enough, you leave it too long, so there is a little bit of a science to this. So one of the factors is severity of defects, and one of those big items that you look at, and they look at a lot of different defects, but one of the big drivers is fatigue cracking. That's an alligator cracking. So once you start in the fatigue cracking, that's a sign that the road is, is basically shot at that point. Should have really been fixed a little sooner before you get to that point is what you really want to do. So all these roads that we're looking at, and this 4.35 million, had fatigue cracking in 10% plus range, and the roads that we picked here are in the 25% range. So we're looking at roads that have high fatigue cracking, and that was our major focus in this group of roadways for this year. Also, age of roadway is important, because roads only have a certain useful life, and they're in about the 15 to 20-year range, and once they get to that point, they end up quickly. So we also want to cluster these roads together, so the proximity to them together gives you more economies of scales when you bring a contractor in. And pavement condition index is what we show the ratings are on all roads in town when we, when we have a consultant, which does it every two years, we're going to do another one in '21. So just, we're, actually, we're signing the contract, we have signed the contract, they're going to be starting soon to do the 2021 pavement condition survey, we just did one in 2019. So once you get, you know, typically around a 50, you really got to start repairing those roads, gets down to 30, it's getting really ugly at that point. Road classification, travel volume, very important, we focused on that last year when we did a lot of collector roads, when we did Moore and Burkeville and Neuse Ridge and Fayetteville and Garrison, those all collector streets. We looked at the worst of the collector roads and got to those because they had the most traffic on them. This year, the focus is more on the worst roads from a fatigue cracking point of view that don't have much life, we really can't stretch it farther. Also, available funding is important because you got to fit the money to the projects, and coordination with Sew and Water projects. So on these ones here, we coordinate with Sew and Water, they don't have Sew and Water issues, but we have another project later this year, because this is 935, we got 1.6 in funding, that we are going to do a joint project with Sew and Water, where we're doing them in Neal and Blanchett Ellington in the downtown area. So SD Woodton for, for proposal for this is 935,000, and basically that's the same unit prices that they bid on last year where they're the low bidder by $60,000. You know, there's only minor exceptions to that where we didn't have, because it's a different project, there's, there's different types of work, and we only have about, with, related to the sidewalk, we put some contingency items in there, only about $20,000. So we're only talking about 2%, that's different. Other than that, 98% of it's the same. So we're looking at a contract modification, number two, which this contract allows us to do that. So it's mutually beneficial, if we both agree to do it, we can extend the contract and, and do more work. So this would bring it up to 97%, we can go up to 100%. We've already executed one modification on that in the original contract. So SD Woodton is looking at finishing soon, they're looking at December 31st, which is good. The sooner you get to the roads, the better, because roads don't deteriorate linearly, they actually deteriorate, they're pretty flat, and then we go to freeze thaw cycles, they deteriorate in pot hole season, and then they, then they flatline again, and so it's, they spike. So we'd really like to get to them before winter if you can. And it's kind of aggressive for SD Woodton to do that, so we're, we're giving them a little bit of leeway in the contract to go to March 31st, because if they don't finish it by December 15th, well, it's too cold to pave until probably sometime in mid-April or mid-February, I should say. So we gave them a little bit more latitude on that, but we're expecting that they can do it, because we did have a great experience with SD Woodton. They started the project a little later, but they finished even earlier than the previous contractor from the previous year. So that was great, we finished about a month early with them, and did a lot of work, and they did, was really not, without a hitch. So it was a great experience with them doing on time, on budget. So we believe that this, this is fair and reasonable, and we recommend the Town Council approve the contract modification and authorize the town manager to execute the contract. Do you have any questions?
Questions or comments? Thank you, Blake.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Grantis.
I'd like to authorize the staff to execute the contract. Mr. Mills just shared with us.
We have a motion and a second to authorize staff to execute the contract. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Up next on the agenda is the municipal park site improvements, demolition, and early procurement.
Joshua Baird again, Scott Bernard is going to be joining here. Quick update on the Parks and Rec, projects are moving, the design build contract at Municipal making significant progress on. The contract is out for bid for construction contract for East Clayton Community Park, so eager for next few weeks as these things really come together. In terms of municipal park improvements and the design build project, we're preparing for the special meeting on November 10th in terms of where we get to bring some options for GMP before you, and allow some decisions to be made in terms of how far that project goes at Municipal Park. So in advance of that, though, there's some items within that, that US Council have, has made, indicated that it's a priority as well as the public. Some of those items have a longer lead time, and so looking to stay on schedule and be sure we're mindful of, of making the best time that we can. Staff recommends an early demolition, demolition package for the site as well as early procurement of some of those items, that includes a splash pad, the playground equipment, and some early engineering on the actual pre-engineered structures themselves. This would really allow us to get moving in advance of formally executing the GMP, going through the bond sales, and really kick things off. The, the early procurement and demo package would increase the current design build contract, that Phase 1, by $605,828. So the new contract total would be 991, 262, that includes the existing Phase 1 preliminary design services as part of that design build contract. The early package will require a budget amendment, and Finance Director is here to speak to that as well. We are set up where we can reimburse ourselves upon the bond sale, but that budget action for the budget should be in your packet as well. And with that, I'm going to let Scott talk through some of the items related to specifics on the splash pad and playground equipment.
Good evening, Mayor, Council members, the pictures are worth a thousand words, so I'm, we're going to wait just a second for these things to come up. Here's an artist rendering of the playground structures that we are proposing to install with the Municipal Park improvements. The, the structure there in the center, there is not one that is installed currently in North Carolina. Here's a picture of the one that's installed in the Spartanburg area of South Carolina, front and center. It's called a physics It's called a physics climber. And it's very different than a lot of the post and platform structures that we have throughout the system today, particularly at Municipal Park, I mean at Community Park. The idea of this newer style structure is that there's no one single point of entry or no one single point of exit. So therefore, play is not really prescribed, where you come up the steps and go down the slot. You come in and out throughout the structure. And then next, here's a rendering of the splash pad. And this is one that's actually already built in Moxville. And our layout will be slightly different, but still featuring all of the same features, including the bucket that I would describe as a Great Wolf Lodge-style dump bucket. Lots of sprayers that are mobile. Although, you know, just for parents' information, they tend to only spin as far as you want them to spin. So dad, grandparents can stand behind and the kid can't, you know, 360 and hose them down, if you will. Lots of seating. Their splash pad, these actual pictures, does not feature a seat while ours will. But this does give you a really good idea of the type of amenities from the same manufacturer that we intend to have in our splash pad as well. And with that, wide open, any questions y'all may have. But the importance of procuring some of these things in advance is due to the long lead time on these items, such that we can still swing for the fences and open this thing summer of '22.
Awesome. Questions or comments? Mr. Grannis.
Could you tell us when the anticipated start date is for renovation or improvements?
So with the warning of the advanced demo package work will likely begin in late November or early December. Is that fair to say?
I heard about two weeks. So if approved tonight, it should start in about two weeks.
And what do you anticipate the end date to be?
You know, we have nudged them as hard as we can. From their very beginning, we said we wanted the splash pad playground, the primary features to be open for Memorial Day. That's still what we're swinging for. I think we'll miss that by a couple of weeks. But, you know, some of the things like growing in the grass and whatnot may get pushed a little bit later into the project. But, you know, we 100% in our contract, 100% intense. This splash pad to be open for the summer, not to open on Labor Day weekend. And we say, hey, thanks. We'll see you next year.
Right.
Okay.
Anyone else? All right, thank you, gentlemen. I'll turn it over to the council. No, I'm sorry.
Oh, you're good.
No, go ahead. You have questions?
No, I was, no, you're good. Go ahead. You're good.
All right. So I'll turn it over to the council, and I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor. Yeah, I would like to entertain a motion to approve ordinance 2021-10-03.
Second. A second for adoption of the ordinance 2021-1013. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
Thank you all very much for your continued support.
Thank you. Mr. Holder.
I want to make a motion that we authorize the town manager to execute this ordinance.
We have a motion and a second to authorize the town manager to execute. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Up next is the WRF funding package, number one.
Mr. Mayor, Council, Louis Duffy with the Town of Clayton Project Team here to present the first funding package that our design builder, Gannett Fleming, has brought to us. It's about $6.7 million. And it includes the general conditions to get us to the final GMP. It includes their bond for the total amount of $125 million for the plant. And then it includes construction administration for some of these early procurement packages that we're doing. And then it includes two actual early procurement packages. One being the underslab ducted iron pipe that was that long lead item we were telling you all about. And then the pre-stress D-110 concrete tanks that this pipe is going under. And it's crucial to have these two packages together and pass because the tank vendor wants to be reviewing the shop drawings that the pipe vendor is going to be presenting to the town. So that way, say, a pipe needs to be six inches bigger, since it's smaller, we're catching that now instead of when it gets delivered. So we had two bidders on each of these procurement packages. The lowest bidder won for the pipe. And then for the tanks, one of the bidders was actually non-responsive because they did not meet the schedule. And then they also forgot the factor of safety for our secondary clarifiers. There's some high water table there, and they did not take into account. So we had to deem them non-responsive. So with that, I'm recommending to let Rich execute the agreement to release the funds to Gannett Fleming. Happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Awesome. Questions or comments for staff? Mr. Attorney.
One point, and Louis, I meant to get with you about this. But in the package, there's a letter from the surety saying that they would look favorably on issuing the bonds. But there's not actually a bond in the package. And I suspect that's coming after the contract is approved.
Yes.
Then I think the motion should include subject to receipt of bonds in satisfactory form.
Thank you, sir. One else? Thank you. I'll turn it back over to council and entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor? Go ahead.
Mr. Thompson.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve, authorize the town manager to execute the agreement subject to receipt of bonds in satisfactory order.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for authorization to the town manager to execute this agreement, making sure all the extra information is in there that we need at the appropriate time. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Jumping on down to staff reports, beginning with the town manager.
Mayor, Council, one quick update, following up on the action you just took. That was a big milestone for us that is really going to be the first packages that are going to hit the ground out of the site. If you haven't been out there in a while, most of the early grading package is complete. There's some water line work that needs to be completed between now and the end of the year. But effectively, that site looks a lot different and has had a serious amount of dirt moved in a short period of time. Moving forward, that particular approval that you just did is going to be covered under that first $15 million of state revolving fund loan that was previously approved by the LGC. Staff has been working with our two industries to finalize the agreements. We had a lofty kind of deadline that we had imposed upon ourselves of last Friday to try to get those finalized. We've got, we got kind of thrown a little bit of a curveball in our discussions with the local government commission midweek last week. So we're working out some finer details with Griffles right now, but fully expect to have that completed by the end of the week. And we will be looping back with Novo now with this additional provisions to figure out how quickly we can get them entered into an agreement as well. So we'll continue to work towards the final project deadline of November of 2024. Right now, it's kind of the late delivery on that project. But we're making a lot of progress, and it's exciting to kind of see some of these approvals coming forward. So with that, that's the only thing I had for you this evening.
All right, thank you, sir. Town attorney? Town clerk? Any other staff? Now, I'll open the floor for informal discussion and public comment. No one wishing to speak? I'll turn it over to council for comments.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to take just a few moments to discuss an issue that it really won't affect me this much now because I have two meetings left. But the future council will have to deal with this. And that is the matter of getting the agenda on time. This past week, we received the agenda on Friday afternoon after lunch, and it was over 500 pages. That is a lot to ask for a council to review over a weekend and be ready for a Monday meeting. There is a policy in place, and Kimberly, you can chime in if you'd like, that all materials from staff should be turned into you by lunch on Tuesday prior to the meeting, correct?
The schedule that we have prepared now is all documents should be received in the clerk's office by Monday at 12 noon, Monday, the same week that the agenda goes out.
And, you know, we've discussed this for a couple of years now because we've been struggling with this. And the only thing I could see that could help you provide us with a timely agenda would be on Monday at noon, you send a, just a quick email to council saying, "All items have been accepted. We're moving forward with the agenda." If we don't receive that email, we know we've got a problem. If that's agreeable with the current council. Holding the staff pretty much responsible for getting the stuff to the clerk on time.
Yeah, I mean, I think you have, you've made a valid point that this council has the expectation that all staff will meet the requests of the town clerk's office in order to fulfill the requirements for upcoming agendas by said date and said time. And I think that that sends a clear enough message to everyone who is employed by Town of Clayton that deals with agenda prep and execution.
Right.
Absolutely.
Anybody else? Mark, does he have something to add?
Mr. Grannis.
I just want to thank Councilman Bun for bringing that up because I think we would all agree that for whatever circumstances that have occurred over the last year and a half with respect to lightness, that doesn't justify not being able to get the agenda documentation to the clerk at the appropriate time. And if it doesn't occur, then it must, I think it should be moved to the next council meeting. And I know that could be an imposition. But I think it's unreasonable to ask our clerk and deputy clerk to put things together three or four days before our meeting, two of which are weekend days. And especially in this case, it was a large agenda, and there was a lot to go through. So I would just like us to see, let's adhere to the policy. And if the documentation is not in, and it doesn't go on the agenda.
Mr. Holder.
I'll pass out a sheet. This is my analysis of the population changes in Johnson County, 2010 to 2020. Column two shows the changes by the county, by the unincorporated county, and by municipalities, and those are percentages. Go over to column, to the last two columns, last three columns. First of the last three shows the percentage of the county population in 2010. Clayton, the county had, the unincorporated county had 70.6% of the population. Clayton had 9.5. And you see how the rest of the municipalities fell down from there. The next column shows the percentage in 2020. The unincorporated county went from 70% to 77%, or 6.4% of the counties increased in population. The next row shows Clayton at 12.2% over .095 in 2010. So we had a 2.7% increase in the total population for the county. All the rest of the municipalities had negative percentages from 2010 to 2020. So we must be doing something right. I think the county should be concerned about the increase that the unincorporated areas have versus the municipalities. And I think we need to continue on the path we are for development and increasing the boundaries of Town of Clayton. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Any other council comments? Mr. Grannis.
Two things. I'd like to thank Councilman Holder for that bit of information. I just wanted to share an experience that I was confronted with indirectly last evening. The development in which I live in had an unexpected death due to either a heart attack or an aneurysm. And the person's wife and also a friend of hers were in observance of the EMS department, our police department members, a few of them, and also our fire department members. And both the lady who lost her husband and the other woman, I neglected to mention one person, also Jason Thompson, who is our county coroner. They were all there. And these women gave extraordinary compliments to all facets of the first responders that were there and were very, very grateful for the response that they made and for the efforts that they made to save this woman's husband. And I wanted to pass that along in a public setting because I've said many times, I think that our fire department, our police department, and our EMS relationship with Johnson County EMS really do a phenomenal job. But they very seldom hear about it. And so I'm pleased to have the experience to bring forth to this council tonight to acknowledge a job well done. Unfortunately, the gentleman passed away. But it was, it had nothing to do with any of our first responders. They acted over and above according to the two women that were there. So I personally want to extend a thank you on their behalf to our fire chief, and also to our police department, our police chief, and also to the Johnson County EMS. And especially to Jason as well. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Just a couple of comments from the mayor. I know that this coming week, that this week is our week to meet with the manager and executive team. I want to make sure that we get a complete update on where we are with the Old Town Hall deed. I want to make sure that we have some information on how we're moving forward with the four-way stop on Fayetteville Street, wherever it's going to be, Blanche or Handby. And I want an update on the complaint that we got from a neighbor in a subdivision that spoke about someone having a business being operated in that subdivision. All right, anything else to come before this council? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Good night.